Pledge of Allegion. Alright, roll call. Marx.
Here.
Van Blercon.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Falcon.
Here.
Manor.
Here.
Lanham.
Here.
Alright, we've got the consent agenda items, uh, the minutes from the council of June seventh, special counsel June first, June twenty first. Committee of the whole of June twenty first and the airport commission of June fifteenth. Is there a motion questions or a motion to accept that consent agenda items? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Alright, public comment, is there anyone here for public comment? Anyone here for public comment, I'll ask three times. Anyone here for public comments? Okay, let's move on to agenda item number two wastewater treatment plant zoning code proposal from S E H. So this was discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting. Uh. With a, uh, a review. From Eric. Are there any other thoughts, questions, discussions?
Choices that we would have by the properties and. Mm-hmm. Can they have them or something?
Right.
You know, you have a lot of choices.
Yep.
Yeah, at this point, it's, um. Approving. Uh, that we, that we will be hiring them to.
Right.
Do the work for that particular.
And it did come out a committee that. Yes, our agreement to do that, so.
I would move that we approve the committee's recommendation for the. Wastewater Treatment Plan zoning code proposal.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second then.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I think.
Opposed? Alright, moving on to resolution seven twenty twenty-three adopting a capital asset policy, this was all part of what the requirement was that they were together. Um, and we also agreed in council. Um, to move that forward.
I think, right? Oh, yeah, that's. Not in this one. Capital asset policy was, we changed it to ten thousand? In the actual wording?
Has it, has it been changed in here?
I did go through and change all the five thousand, uh, dollar biggest ten thousand and the one, I think it was village to city.
Village to city, yep.
For you to prepare.
Yep.
And that's in our packet as well.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution zero seven dash twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
A second.
Hey, any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright. Okay. Uh, next is ordinance number zero two twenty twenty-three all terrain and utility terrain vehicles. So at our committee meeting, we had a discussion about, um. F from the east and from the west, and it looks like the. Current document that's in front of us is only closing down ATV UTV. Um, traffic on Highway forty-six. With some signage, we had talked about signage at each. Of those roads just before then.
So the signs are approved and what we put up in like we had suggested right coming up to the end of F where they can cross forty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there'd be a sign indicating the last.
Yeah. Last exit off of there. Right now, we've got signs out there right now and we'll just. Adopt, move or change, make it work. We'll get on.
Yep.
What are the consequences for writing the UTV on ninety-one forty-six?
That's the ticket.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you're just, you can't write on state highways.
Okay. See it from time to time, I'm just curious if there's.
Not allowed to anywhere in the state, and it should be some sort of ticket.
Right. Good.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number O two dash twenty twenty-three. Regarding all. Terrain and UTVs.
Is there a second?
A second then.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion is carried, uh, Eeler's presentation for water rates.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna share my screen, so just give me a second. Okay. So are you able to see the presentation now on your screen?
Yes, we also have our, our packet as well.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you for having us, uh, again, uh, tonight, I know, uh, about a month ago, we spoke about the sewer rates and, uh, city staff had asked if we could run a similar analysis for the water utility. And so you're gonna see a similar presentation to what you saw about a month ago for the sewer utility, however, the difference here is we get the fund of the Public Service Commission, so a lot of what we'll go through is all based off of how the Public Service Commission acts and functions and how they calculate rates, so please understand you have a little bit less purview in terms of making direct action, however, we can make certain requests to the PSC to see if they will, uh, accept those, so that's gonna be kind of the main difference between sewer utility discussion and the water utility discussion tonight. So, uh, the water utility, um, is encountering some increased capital investment. It looked like you completed a pretty, uh, big project in twenty twenty-one and maybe bled into a little bit twenty twenty-two, uh, but that increased capital investment goes into the PSC math that we'll get to on a future slide, um, but it also increases your pilot and depreciation expenses. So we're looking to identify, you know, fiscal sustainability for the water utility, just like the sewer utility. Have water rates pay for water assets and sewer rates pay for sewer assets. So essentially what we're trying to, you know, figure here like the sewer utility is look at your historical rate performance to identify where you've been, um, in terms of covering all of your financial obligations, as well as looking at it from covering the PSC methodology. Then from there, we'll take, uh, some future projections as it relates to ONM depreciation and pilot. And then, um, while not pertinent to this, because we, the city did not have a formal capital improvement list. You know, we can look at in the future, um, how the city can fund, uh, future projects. Um, once and if you do formalize, uh, capital improvement plan for the water utility. And then finally, we'll look at, uh, the rate impact as a result of our analysis. So some history here in terms of the historical rate implementation is you get a few windows of opportunity to adjust your rates, as I mentioned, when you're regulated by the Public Service Commission. You don't just get to choose, um, hey, we need a five percent increase, let's increase it five percent. There are certain things that you can and can't do. One of the windows of opportunity to adjust rates is what's called conventional rate case, that is the full rate case process, um, in which they'll take that time to review all of your PSC and reports. Uh, make sure that the utility is billing correctly, uh, reporting things correctly. And then ultimately they'll, uh, decide on, you know, your revenue requirement and ultimate rate adjustment, that application is quite a lengthy one, about thirty-six attachments deep. Um, so if you choose to move forward tonight with filing a rate case application, um, we have been engaged to help the city through that process as, uh, we do so with many communities throughout the state. Um, since your last conventional rate case, which was completed June thirtieth, uh, twenty, uh, two thousand four, excuse me, um, since then, utility finance plan, meaning, meaning your added capital is up forty-four percent. This is important because how the PSC looks at your water rates. Um, any added capital goes into what's called your net investment rate base. And then they benchmark every utility to a rate of return, but we'll get to that on the next slide. Your ONM, however, has been stable based off of three, five and ten year averages. Um, meaning that your day-to-day operating costs have remained pretty much the same, um, as it, as it relates to, uh, your two thousand four conventional rate case and what rates were set to at that time. So that's good news, however, when you add capital, that pilot expense or payment in lieu of taxes also goes out. Goes up because the PSC basically says if you don't choose to change this by resolution, um, the utility should be treated like a taxpayer. Um, and essentially you're taxing all of those assets of the utility and this then becomes a revenue for the general fund. Um, but since you, whenever you add capital, um, like you have done since two thousand four, that pilot expense does go up. And then also as you add capital, of course, depreciation, uh, goes up, so stands to reason that those two items pilot and depreciation have gone up with that added capital. And we'll get to what that effect looks like on the next slide. Your twenty twenty-two PSC annual report rate of return is four point six four percent. Right now, the PSC's rate of return is six and a half percent. Why that's important is it basically, um, tells a picture that you're behind, uh, if you will, based off of the PSC benchmarking. And so we'll kind of go into how much, uh, how far behind, excuse me, uh, the utility is on the next slide. Since that point in two thousand four, the other window of opportunity is what's called to adjust rates is what's called a simplified rate case. And that is a much simpler process as the name implies, um, in that you file, if you're eligible for a simplified rate case, you send out a customer notice and basically you get your inflationary adjustment within forty-five days. So you have completed a few since your last conventional rate case in twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. However, you are not eligible for this at this time. Meaning, um, the adjustment right now, if you were to uh, move forward with the simplified adjustment actually takes you above their benchmark based off of your twenty twenty-two results and therefore that window of opportunity is closed, if you will. In terms of your historical rate performance, again, kind of a numbersy slide, if you recall from, uh, the sewer presentation, but we're gonna focus, focus on the bottom half here for the most part. This is the PSC math on how they determine, if you were to ask the question, what should our uh, water rates be, and you'll look at three buckets in terms of costs to build your revenue requirement. And they'll say that is the amount of revenues you should be generating from water rates. So these three categories are ONM or your day-to-day expenses, which does include your pilot expense. Depreciation. And then, uh, this mythical beast that they call net investment rate base plus, um, and then that generates your rate of return. So what this is, is essentially think of it as all the value of your water system and only the undepreciated value of that water system, that's the amounts here. So, you know, the one point six to about two million, uh, now as we've gone through time. And then each year the PSC sends that that's that benchmark rate of return for all utilities to say if you come in for a rate case absent of anything else you provide and you just want the benchmark rate of return at that time. These are the dollar amounts we would have adjusted, you know, we would have wanted you to collect. So that's, that changes over time, it's benchmarked to, uh, municipal securities, meaning uh, thirty-year municipal debt plus two percent. So that's kind of why it changes is it changes with the interest rates that a municipality could secure funding on. So right now, as I stated, that rate of return is around six and a half percent. And they will take, um, you know, your, that current undepreciated value of the system, apply that six and a half percent and say beyond depreciation, no, and I'm you need to collect this dollar amount, which for the city is a hundred thirty thousand and change. Net your other revenues, um, builds your revenue requirement and then you can basically say, this is what our current user rate revenue is and what are we, you know, in terms of adequacy there. That said, for the most part, you have been adequate. Um, you know, this, this can change if you have high maintenance expense years. Um, you know, utilities, as I stated in sewer presentation, tend to have volatile maintenance expenses. Um, and therefore, you know, like twenty nineteen, when we have a high expense year, you can be inadequate. Um, but we've also seen some kind of some building or increased, uh, budgetary expenses as we move into twenty twenty-three. The other thing to consider is the PSC builds your rates not off of a budget expense year, but what they call a test year, and when that, what that means is they do want you to include normalizations for infrequent, um, larger maintenance, uh, expenses like water tower paintings, um, well rehabs, well inspections, you know, other items like that. So please understand, we're not gonna build, uh, the rate case based off of, you know, strictly what the twenty twenty budget is. But it's gonna be more based off of, you know, five, ten, three-year averages plus those normalizations in the maintenance accounts. So, but just looking at it on a budgetary basis from the twenty twenty-three budget does show that the rates are behind about twenty-one point nine percent. Um, and then if you were to look at it on a cash basis, the one thing that I'll point out here outside of the fact that you're looking to build your rates and the PSC does not use this methodology, but as explained in the sewer presentation, this is another industry-wide accepted practice, uh, just not in the state of Wisconsin, because we get the fun in Madison. Um, but that if you were to kind of ask, where are we in terms of covering our cash expenses, the utility has for the most part covered those, uh, meaning that rates are performing in an adequate measure. However, uh, it would be concerning, um, for the past, you know, three out of the, the five or six years shown here. You're at a pretty narrow margin. And why that can be concerning is if you do have additional capital projects that come up, you know, you'd be, you'd only able to be afford, to afford, excuse me, about twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, debt service payment. Some other historical, uh, financial indicators that we like to look at are reserves for utilities, like I've explained. Um, when you have volatile maintenance expenses, it is important to have adequate reserves in order to make sure you can pay for those cash flow disruptions. And then certainly if you have any, uh, revenue disruptions, um, that could have been seen during COVID time. Um, that can be seen as more and more appliances get more water efficient and you don't, aren't experiencing a lot of growth. Um, it's important to have reserves, so we have benchmarked the utility based off of your size to a three-month target in order to fund any deficits and potential future capital to blend Nick, uh, debt and cash. That said, there was a large drop in twenty twenty-one that was reported. But we do believe, uh, in speaking with city staff that the CDBG fund, um, there is a outstanding due from the CD, CDBG fund to the water utility. Um, we did ask the auditor if this was completed for twenty twenty-two as, as a transfer and they have yet to respond, but I would presume, uh, given the magnitude of that drop, that likely was replenished in twenty twenty-two, so um, you would see your reserves kind of be back to an adequate measure. Um, however, you know, without a formal capital improvement plan two, I would, um, just say that if you do have concerns of an aging system, there may be a need to kind of increase, uh, this reserve target. Uh, but please do know the Public Service Commission does benchmark utilities to a minimum of ninety days cash on hand. Um, so they, they will want you to keep a similar target that we've kind of identified here. You will only, uh, see that and they'll only tell you that they want you to maintain those ninety days. Actually, if you report two years of negative operating income in PSC and reports, then they tell you that they actually are monitoring your cash. So just please note in the expanded tables that I provided, uh, you would see other, uh, targets identified in our model. Looking at the future projection and only to say, what if we file a rate case? And we just go along with what the PSC, uh, would decide. Um, you would be looking at about an eighteen and a half percent adjustment to, uh, our projected, um, rate of return by the time that that, uh, case would be closed. So we would imagine, um, you know, there may be a desire to look at other alternatives, so we will, uh, discuss that later on in the presentation. However, the task that city staff had, you know, provided to us to inform you of tonight would just be basically saying, what does it look like if we file with the PSC? And they force, you know, the hand of their benchmark rate of return. The one thing that I'll say, um, you know, certainly if those cash reserves were replenished by the CDBG fund, you would have an argument to basically say, you know, we're, we don't need, uh, the full rate of return. Um, just, you know, with absent any other large projects forthcoming. Um, unless there are, then I may, you know, say something different. Um, but if there isn't any large, uh, capital projects forthcoming, you know, you could make that argument that the city would like to increase rates, uh, you know, under a lower adjustment at first and then use those simplified rate cases more frequently like you have in the past to kind of balance, um, the adjustments instead of having a higher rate adjustment in one, one shot, if you will. So, uh, please understand that this eighteen and a half percent, uh, item shown is just to show kind of PSC math. Um, that would be required if you were to go in for a rate case this year. Then the other thing that I'll mention, if you're curious as to, does it have to be in twenty twenty-four? Please note that those PSC rate cases do take about six to eight months to complete, once you file the rate application. So the rate application is due every year, uh, July thirty-first. Um, so we can certainly move forward with that and we'll discuss that on a future slide. But we just wanted to kind of identify what potentially the PSC math would be if, if you will, um, absent any other requests we may make to the PSC. Then looking at, uh, an impact to your water bill. Um, it's our understanding that there's a desire to potentially go to monthly billing, um, which you currently bill quarterly, so we did kind of wanna show both here on the slide. So that said, we are assuming fifteen thousand gallons per quarter or five thousand gallons per month uh, for this impacted sample customer. And then, um, the typical residential customer based off of their meter size. So this eighteen and a half per- percent adjustment, um, is actually a smaller dollar amount, uh, per quarter. That is, of course, because you're, right now, your quarterly billing's under a hundred dollars. So with that eighteen and a half percent adjustment, that actually translates to kind of the sample customer at fifteen thousand gallons to about thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. In terms of that change to a quarterly bill or divided by three, about four dollars and forty-two cents. Um, combining that with the sewer utility analysis that we've done, we just kind of wanted to show the full, uh, billing effect. Um, again, and, uh, so you can kind of see the annual utility bill combining sewer and water. The changes to the prior year as well as what is that as a percentage of median household income. There's also a look in terms of individual household incomes, uh, by income tiers, um, in the full tables that we've provided, if you're curious there. This said, the American Water Works Association, if you recall from our discussion last month, um, was about two percent per utility, where they start to say, um, you should look at affordability rate structures. Here, you're at, um, you know, two percent combining both utilities, so you wouldn't quite reach, reach that need, however, um, it's up to, you know, council's discretion if you'd like to investigate other, uh, rate structures and you are moving forward with a conventional rate case. That is the time to do it. You cannot request that outside of a conventional rate case or the full rate case. And you cannot do it as part of a simplified rate case, for example. So as a comparison by county, we pulled St. Croix and Polk counties, um, the utilities um, within the two counties and looked at where Amory's current water bills are at, understand that your PSC name does say joint water and sewer utility, but this is only showing the water utility. And your current bills are, you know, basically in the bottom three in terms of, uh, they're, you know, cheapest, uh, within that two county area. And then with the eighteen and a half percent adjustment, you know, you'd be looking to only ju- jump one utility in, um, Hudson's, uh, public utilities, uh, rates, so again, albeit, um, this may be seen as kind of a larger adjustment. Um, you know, truly, it's, it's not jumping a lot of these utilities. Um, the other thing that I'll identify is we've worked with, uh, and are working with several of these other communities in this area um, to adjust their rates, so, uh, there's certainly gonna be more utilities, uh, going higher in the near future. So specifically, there's four utilities that we're working with, uh, in this two county area, so there will be other utilities that are going up and the other thing and why it's kept in here is it's important to kind of look at those effective dates and those that are older tend to, um, you know, need those adjustments or should be doing those adjustments sooner. Um, the reason being is because if you don't do anything and you think about the PSC math, it truly has a compounding effect as you add capital. Meaning anytime you're adding anything as small as a meter or as big as new pipe, um, that is going into your net investment rate base and its undepreciated value is going into your rate of return requirement. And so as you add capital over the years, this adjustment will get larger and larger. So looking at our recommendations, right now, the city is not eligible for a simplified rate case, that's what SRC means. Uh, based on your twenty twenty-two PSC annual report results. The plan that we've put forth in front of you tonight does kind of show, you know, hey, if you were eligible, we would have put in a simplified, but you're not, so truth be told, the max use of your simplified were available. But then the conventional rate case, so this is truly only showing just a conventional rate case projected on the PSC rate adjustment. Not solving for, you know, minimum debt coverage or anything like that, but if the auditor responds about, um, if those monies were transferred back from the CDBG fund and your cash position, excuse me, is, um, back to a stable place. We may be able to argue for a lower rate of return. And then another alternative, because we always do get asked the questions with the fund of the Public Service Commission, is you could wait, uh, for your twenty twenty-three PSC annual report results to see if you're eligible for a simplified. But, um, again, if you're not and you've just added enough capital to kind of continually uh, increase your net investment rate base, but not make you eligible for a simplified. You could end up kind of, um, you know, adhering to that compounding effect of the PSC math. So that increase can go up even though you're not eligible for a simplified. It's kind of the unfortunate position the PSC puts utilities in. And then if you are doing, um, the conventional rate case, understand that there would be, you know, potentially other rate-making goals you may have in mind outside of just switching uh, to monthly, which we could talk about, uh, at this time. So with that, I'll stop talking and take some questions, comments, if you have them.
What is the, uh, the vast, uh, large jump in, in last year and year before, no, yeah, this year and last year in depreciation, is that, is that the, uh, effect of the new industrial park?
That would have been a result of the projects you completed. Um, I don't have specific knowledge of what exact projects were completed, so I would ask if city staff would have knowledge.
Means mainstream and the industrial park. So what's the rate of depreciation?
I'm sorry, the question was, what's the rate?
How, how fast are they, are they depreciating that?
Sure, it, it depends on the asset. Uh, but mains, they typically depreciate, um, longer than twenty years, um, they're at just under three percent, uh, for mains. Uh, for mains, um, computers, you know, office equipment, they'll depreciate faster. Um, typically at about five years or closer to twenty percent depreciation. But they have, there's kind of statutory depreciation schedule that they have every utility on based off of the assets booked.
So what did the, uh, water and sewer part of Main Street cost? Do you know, Jeff?
One eight million, something like that. Cause one of the funds, like one million, the other one's like eight or ninety thousand, it's something.
Depreciation value, uh, at the new industrial park.
Off my head.
That whole project was what, three, three million or something like that?
Just under two.
Just under two, yeah, okay, yeah, that's right. It's under two, so. What's the effect of not going for the whole eighteen percent in one year? Can you, can you graduate, graduate that over a five or six year period?
Unfortunately, no. If you had a project that had a construction schedule that you're booking assets, let's say for twenty three and twenty four, meaning, um, those assets were used and useful in twenty twenty three, some of them were, and then, you know, future assets in twenty twenty four. They allow you to do what they call a two-step rate increase. However, typically those, um, projects do have to go through the construction authorization um, process. So with none of those looming, you would likely be looking at, you know, a one-step increase. Um, but the other alternative would be if you decided not to move forward with the current rate case to see if you'd be eligible based off of twenty twenty three's uh, results, which we project you would if those operating and maintenance expenses stay true to the budgetary, uh, numbers. So I don't know kind of where you're at. Um, at this point in time through the year, um, against budget. Uh, but I would, uh, imagine if you're kind of realizing those budgetary numbers is, is shown in the first couple of slides, um, you would likely be eligible because there were heightened expenses excluding depreciation. But now you're kind of realizing the full booking of the projects completed the past couple of years. And therefore your depreciation, um, would be up. And, uh, your net operating income reported to the PSC would be down, therefore you'd likely be eligible and at the point at which you file your twenty twenty three PSC annual report. So understand, they only allow you to be eligible once they see your annual report. So the next time you'll get an opportunity to see if you're eligible would likely be around May first of twenty twenty four. And then your rate adjustment, presuming you're eligible, would be subject to whatever that current simplified rate adjustment is. Historically, that's been around three percent. However, for this year, they did finally realize that inflation exists. Um, so they've allowed the simplified rate adjustment just for twenty twenty three to be eight percent. However, you're not eligible for that. So you can't do that. So you'd be subject to next February, they'll release what the new simplified rate adjustment would be. And then you'd be subject to whether or not you qualify based off of your twenty twenty three PSC annual report results. Those usually get released in May. So you'd have to wait quite a bit of time. And then if you're not eligible, there's kind of the, what is the compounding effect of that time? Is it, uh, nineteen and a half percent adjustment or twenty and a half percent adjustment? That's kind of where you'd be at.
We don't feel sure that we would be increasing it eighteen percent and that would be authorized, is what you're saying at this point?
That's the, correct. That's kind of the PSC math in terms of where we get with how we'd enter information into the uh, rate application. And so that's what we project. We could also request them, if you'd like, to use a lower rate of return to lower that adjustment. Um, typically, they don't go lower than a full percent on allowable rate of return. The other biggest thing that I'd kind of like to ver- verify to before I'd recommend going at that lower rate of return is what the cash position is as a result of the, uh, potential CDBG transfer that was supposed to happen.
And when, when, when you find out, you said it's pending in the auditor. Sometimes it's just whatever the time the auditor is, but it's, seems like it has an effect on the decision.
Guessing it'll be with our audit adjustments for the twenty twenty two year, but we haven't heard anything about that in six weeks.
So basically, the eighteen percent is going to just take care of our additional depreciation because we have raised our operational expenses too bad, uh, at all?
Correct. I would, I would see it basically funding the increase in pilot. That was about a fifteen percent adjustment and just pilot expense. And then funding to, you know, catching up to depreciation and effective rate of return as well. So that's kind of what the eighteen percent kind of catches you back up to the PSC math, if you will. Sorry, I didn't catch the question.
Percent if we rate until May of next year, is that correct?
Yeah, if you're eligible for the simplified, it could be a smaller adjustment that you could taper into. Uh, subject to if you're eligible in future years, uh, but it would be a way to, you know, only take a slice of this, if you will, subject to your twenty twenty three PSC annual report results. Um, and then if you weren't, you know, just understand the potential small but compounding effect of the PSC math.
I'm concerned about the compounding effect of a thirty three percent sewer rate increase on an eighteen percent watering place. You know, you don't believe me, but I do. And if there was a way for us to either soften that or, uh, the CBDG funds are, are those, one of those left, leftover from something?
Main Street project.
Street project. And so we just need word from the auditor as to whether they can be.
It's just more moving it between line items. The money's kind of already spent. It's just making it go to the.
Water utility tremendously.
When is our time running this week? We need to make decisions on this.
End of July, I think he said is when we have to apply, so.
For a, yeah, for a test, if you wanted it to be implemented, um, in the early goings of twenty twenty four, you'd have to apply by, uh, July thirty first. Otherwise, you can do what's called a test year twenty twenty four rate application starting August first. So we could just do a different rate application. It would just be further delayed. And it would include any capital that you're adding in twenty twenty four, hence the potential for a compounding. In fact, if, if you were planning to add, you know, any assets, meters, anything. But to date, um, it sounds like that may not be the case. So there actually may not be a huge compounding effect there. That's why I kind of say it's probably only a percent, um, to it if you're truly not adding assets, um, there, so.
It's that.
Yeah, it's gonna be stiff for folks anyway, didn't it?
Yeah, we still get to graduate it, like I say, something.
What are the differences between applying for it by the end of July or applying for it in the first of August?
You, you're just collecting what happens, what is estimated to happen in twenty twenty four. Because they'll, they work off of what they call a test year. Um, so they basically say, tell us all of the capital you're pro- projected to add in twenty three. Now as well as twenty twenty four, if you file after August first.
Okay, so Jeff, do we have any, any, uh, well, expenditures?
It's had nothing much. I, you know, it's been like twenty grand in hydrants. We've been ran over and busted. That's about the biggest expense I've got going this year. We're gonna have to paint towers here in a couple of years. But besides that, you know, we just had the wells kind of redone here the last couple of years.
Taken the road. Uh, water tower down, is that part of the, why don't you tell?
Been taken away from the water system. Oh, that's just a historical deal, so it's got nothing to do with the.
Okay, that's one big thing I can think of that.
Unconnected.
Well, if they get the C, CBDG funds allotted to reality utility, um, when you anticipating the, the rate of increase would be by writing to August? You're saying that's going to go down substantially or?
Uh, no, it just makes your argument a little easier, um, so as to say, um, you actually have, uh, cash. So your twenty twenty one audit reflected that you had near zero cash, if not exactly zero, off the top of my head. Um, so the PSC would not look favorably on that. They don't want utilities to have commingled funds, although you probably do so at the bank. Not that that's a bad thing. I'm just saying they're gonna ask, what's your water cash balance? To be sure that you, you know, can ask for a lower rated rate adjustment. Otherwise, if you have a low cash balance, they're gonna say, no, you need the full rate of return so that you can rebuild those cash reserves that we'd like you to have. So if it was, if you're kind of back up to the three month uh, item, I would say we could probably request something in the neighborhood of fifteen percent, uh, rate adjustment. Lowering the, that's lowering the PSC math to about a percent less of the rate of return.
Versus what, what, so that for this year, if we did it for this year to fifteen percent?
Yep, if you did a test year twenty twenty three rate application and, uh, requested a lower rate of return, I think the lowest that they would probably accept would be something that gets you to a fifteen percent rate adjustment.
So you're working at fifteen percent versus eighteen and a half.
Correct.
And if we get the CBDG funding back, then what would you anticipate the rate would be?
The, the fifteen percent.
Still fifteen percent. That's why it would go down to fifteen because that's, because that would backfill the, the cash on hand number. That's what they would be wanting the full eighteen and a half percent for to make sure that that was covered. So in this case, we would just say it was covered, so you could, it drops to fifteen. But I guess I'm curious about the, the last alternative. Um, waiting for the twenty twenty three PSC AR. What's, you know, the negative is yes, you, you stretching it out further, not getting rate change. Now you might have to, you know, you might have to bite the bullet later on, but if we do, if we do qualify for this simplified rate change, any guesstimate on where that would be?
If you did qualify, what the percentage would be? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Translate what I said, thank you.
No, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Uh, so the typical simplified adjustment has been three percent. Last year, they set it to four and a half percent. This year, it was eight percent. So it's probably gonna be something in the neighborhood of eight percent to three percent. I imagine that comes down if the annualized kind of CPI comes down. But they don't exactly benchmark it to that either, although they say they track it. Um, because they were a year late on adjusting to eight percent. Um, if you were to look at CPI, so I would imagine it probably comes down a little bit. Is, is that down to five percent, three percent? We won't know until February fifteenth, twenty twenty four. So they release that information every, every February fifteenth, what the simplified adjustment is and the annual benchmark rate of return to see if you do qualify. So we could take preliminary numbers if your auditor would have them at that time, given the CDBG thing. Who knows? Um, but if we were to have kind of preliminary numbers, we could, you know, run it at that time to see if you would potentially qualify, you know, around February fifteenth. Um, but again, they wouldn't really let you apply until those PSC numbers come out. So you're, just understand that delayed timing would be probably until August or September first of next year in terms of a future rate implementation for a percentage between three to eight percent.
It really is important to understand if the auditor will let that happen to, for the CDBG monies to be put into the appropriate line items so that we show a cash balance. And beyond that, we don't have any other alternatives.
Is there an estimated timeframe from the auditor?
Tried calling him. We have tried emailing him. How many times, Ben?
By dozens.
Um, where does he live?
And Brian has tried as well. And we've tried to judge with the different auditors to see if they would, yeah. And I don't want to go on record to say any.
Eight percent next year sounds a whole lot better than eight percent.
It's kind of where I was going, Phil Stanton. But there's some risk in.
I, I understand that.
In doing that, but is it a risk that you can mitigate?
Well, first, like you said, there's moments.
Right, um, but it's.
I don't want to go down that road, but if we have to.
No, but from my understanding, the, the, the CDBG money is assigned for that. It just hasn't been transferred over to allocate there, so. And it's, it's putting it to the column A to column B. The risk is just waiting for the auditor to say yes, more or less. Where did you say he lived again?
Well, my, my other concern as well in, in this is that, you know, operating and maintenance expenses are only going to continue to go up. And I question the depreciation number that we have here in that, is that correct and is that going to be changing? Because this is just an estimated number from twenty two with everything that went online. Um, in the last year, is that number going to change at all, which is going to make a whole lot of difference to these calculations.
I, if you'd like, I can answer that. I would just say the one thing is, uh, understand the PSC will require you to file an amended twenty twenty two PSC annual report if you want to call these numbers not accurate. And I'm, I'm only saying that to just understand, you know, the, the people you're dealing with at the commission. Um, and how, how they operate. Um, so these are, you know, things that get flushed out in the fun of the conventional rate case. Uh, but that said, um, correct, if those depreciation numbers are wrong and they're lower, the PSC math would be lower, meaning a lower adjustment as well. Uh, but they, you know, the, the PSC staff that audits your utility reports takes them as gospel and says, this is exactly where you are. And if you're not and have proof to say you're not, then you need to file amended PSC report. So understand the numbers I'm using. Understand the numbers I'm using is based off of your twenty twenty two P S C N report, which the auditor and city did file.
What's, what's our consensus? Roll the dice, take a risk?
You wanna shoot me in this side of the head or the other side? Well, I, I don't know, I, I was. I mean. I think, I think the fifty percent increase in the, in water sewer in one year is gonna. That, that's a lot for people to, I mean, everybody understands costs go up. That's not the issue. But if, if. We can do an eight percent simplified. In a year. Uh, cause we've been, you know, historically, it looks like, like our rates have been pretty decent. Until we got hit with a big job of, of uh. You know, money that really wasn't money. Uh, I mean, it, it is money, but it's not, uh, not something you gotta dig out of your pocket and.
You know, it's the depreciation.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I just, it's just one more thing for.
It's a lot.
Yeah. And I, and I understand what we have to have, you know, as far as uh P C I or uh.
P S C.
Yeah. P S C, but uh. If there's a way to soften it a little bit, even if they, even if the end potential is, does cost us a percent more. Seems to me that might be a little easier for the taxpayers to. Follow than. Eighteen percent.
Rick, I agree with you.
What'd she say? So what do we need to do?
Make a motion? Or is there? Yeah, I.
I think what we, we need to do is, um, you wanna talk about. Calling it off for a while. I think we move forward with the February. Is that what you said, Brian? February?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend if you're gonna wait. To kind of reanalyze this come February.
Yep.
See if we can, I, I think the other thing too is. Get our answer on the C D B G funds, cause if. There's, for whatever reason, it got reallocated to sewers. I, I don't, I don't know, I'm just bringing up. And I, an idea, but for whatever reason, if that's no longer due to the water utility. And the water utility is still in a very low cash position, I, I think there's reason to. Move forward to make sure that you're financially viable um there. Um, not necessarily in July, um, but if, you know, you wanted to do. Like the twenty twenty four case in fall. The other thing, right, would be. To at minimum revisit this, you know, come the end of February or maybe your first meeting in March, if we can get some. You know, estimated year end twenty twenty three numbers and kind of do the P S C calculations. Again, to just see where you wind up and if you're, if you'll be eligible for a simplified adjustment. And if that's the case, right, it would. I, I have the same feeling where I feel the eighteen followed. That was preceded, excuse me, by the sewer thirty is, is a lot to handle. And if there's a way we can break this up. I would, I would say, if you're not comfortable with the eighteen and a half percent, then, then don't do it now. And we'll revisit it next, you know, presumably next March, you know, at your March meeting.
Well, if, if we were only pushing it to another year and waiting for it to go up even more, that wouldn't make sense, but that's not the case. The alternative is to have a more realistic rate increase based on real numbers at the time. And at this point, we're just kinda stuck, so I would, I would say that we make. The choice to. Take the alternative, which is to wait and follow.
I would agree.
Some of those recommendations to revisit this in late February or in March, where we could have some real numbers in place.
So that, is that your motion?
Statement.
So, so February.
I would, I would move that we will um postpone this. Until uh we can revisit the numbers in, in February of twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll move it to, to March, February, March. Um, next is discussion on, thank, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah.
Uh, next up is discussion of City of Amory Human Resources and other, or inter and interrelated departmental related relations.
Yes, it is. I think based on a few other people's discussions, we asked to add this in here because we have um a lot of dysfunction. We have a lot of. Um, mistrust. We have a lot of, um. Just don't know exactly what's going on. And so, um, I think we need to talk about. How do we, um, how do we approach this to make some changes? We've talked about adding, uh, do we? Do we need a task force to um do some investigation? Do we bring in an outside resource to do some of that kind of? Investigation into. You know, there's, there's so many different. Perspectives and points of view that, you know, I, I can send an email to anybody that says something. Without having anything to back it up. And we also, um, in talking with others. And it's probably a smart thing to bring back a personnel committee. Because there's no other, um. Layer between. H R. Locally and um the departments and there's no oversight, so I'm thinking that we. Considered that under, in discussion as well, and any other ideas to kind of. Move this off from the, the point where we're at right now. And be a lot more positive. I'm listening.
Yep, and that was something that I had brought up with you. So, I mean, and I'm sure some other people that are sitting at this table had thought the same thing that. Um, we went away from, um, all the various different committees that we had, went to the committee of the whole in order to, um. Make the, the different. To make it easier on those of us who were involved in multiple different committees, um, and to. The finance and personnel committee being the same, um, the same committee, it was, it was a lot. Um, but I do feel we've gotten to a point that perhaps, um, bringing. A personnel committee back together, I also suggested, um. Either that or perhaps a liaison from our group, um, for Patty to use as a resource. Um, and for other. Departments. To use as a resource or an, an H R type, um. Person to go to in case a complaint. Was not able to go to Patty. Um, so those were just a couple of thoughts that I had, um, whether we wanna really truly. Go back to the personnel committee again, I don't know. Um, I think it's an option. I think it also gives. Um, Patty some support. Um, as far as, um. Leading the group, um, having, you know. People to. Bounce ideas off and offer some, some suggestions to be involved in. Um, employee reviews and that type of thing. Um, I think there's a lot of things that that committee could do. Whereas a lot of, and where all of it right now is falling onto your shoulders. So that was just a couple of thoughts that I, that I had.
Yes, my other question was, do we need to go further with, um? With, you know, personnel committee helps us in the future. And that's a good thing that I think. To add a, add a layer, that's what I will keep saying, but it's, that's what I really mean is adding a layer, but. For our current status and the situation that we're in right now. Do we need to spend some time or have somebody from the outside spend some time looking at? Where are we with all of these? And it's not, you know, in, individuals, it's departments that are, I'm gonna say probably not functioning. At this point.
I think it's a good idea to have an outside source just to take a look at it, like a mediation.
Which is number seven on the agenda. I mean, that's one of the ideas, uh, it was a proposal that came.
Do we, do we do any smoke concerning our chief of police?
I did.
Yeah, there was a press release.
It's a press release.
Hey. Free press. I just, I mean, I, I just have official paper, but there still are a reasonable number of people, I think, that watch this on. On T V and I think it's important that we. Fire away.
Ansel came to me Monday and he. Gave us a retirement letter, wasn't a. I'm quitting type letter, but it was a retirement letter, so the way I interpreted that is he was quitting. But he's retiring. I mean, it's, there's no basis for him to really. The city, uh, from the city's aspect to pay him or anything like that, because he's hasn't been here long enough. Through our retirement system, system, it's a W R S system. And you have to be, you're vested in five years of that. And he didn't make five years, obviously, so there will be no retirement handed back to him. Um, his P T O and his, uh. Outstanding pay is all that he'll receive and he has not asked for anything else, so. His last official day is Monday. But he's using up his P T O and his. Floating holidays, so he's not really here. And that's all I know at this point. He's, he's not no longer in. Um, I did ask Kip Harris if he would be the officer in charge. We have to have somebody in charge. And that makes it difficult without a chief, because without a chief. You know, how does your department run? And Kip has been there for a long time and he's very willing to step in and help and. Do things in the interim until we can find a repost.
Thank you.
Good.
God, God sent for me because.
So with that in mind, I think maybe we're a little premature on, on. We certainly need to have a discussion of human resources and interdepartmental relations. Would support. The. A personnel committee. Having been on it for quite a few years, so you were on it for a while too. Um, I think that a lot of things that, you know, should, should. Yeah, I believe that you get a much freer discussion. When you have. Fewer folks, uh, uh, not that they don't, I mean, there'll be open meetings and all that kinda stuff. I don't mean that, but, uh. It's just a little easier to, to, uh. Talk about the nitty gritty when you don't have a, a huge, huge, you know, audience.
That being said, you know, with union negotiations going on.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so Eric, quick question. Are, are you envisioning that one person from like the? Council would sit on it and then you would fill other spots with people from the community like any of our other committees or what? What has that looked like in the past?
In the past, it's been a committee of council members.
Yes.
Um, I don't remember if it's always been like the council president, but that would be one.
No.
That was.
It's not.
Yeah, I think it was just appointed. Council members.
Why is it limited to three? In light of the situation that we're dealing with right now. Why wouldn't it be the full committee? With the council?
I'm sure there's a reason. Um, it, it needs to have a quorum of the council, I think. Which could be a problem.
The, the committee that works function in the past is that finance. And I, we used to the committees had discussion, wrestled with things. Take this tar out of it and then brought it to the council with a recommendation. Council did not always follow the recommendations of the committee, although. I'd have to say it was ninety five percent of the time they did.
I think, but I think what, what Mike is asking is why? Take it out of council of, uh, committee at the whole, which is the entire council. Um. I think it's just a, a smaller group working on something like that. There's a little more agility. You can. You can work quicker with three people to be involved in something.
Not everybody was comfortable discussing all those things in a, in a group setting, you know, big group setting either, so. I. I could do it either way, I guess, but, uh, I, I know the personnel. Uh, the personnel part of the personal, you know, and finance committee, I thought worked quite well.
I agree.
And, uh, and it just. It went very smooth. I, I'm not, wasn't so pleased with the finance part of it, but, uh.
Right, and I think the reason that the, the, I mean, the biggest reason that was, it was. Those two were always together, but to roll the finance. Into the committee of the whole only made sense because everybody really needed to be involved in those conversations. And so, I mean, to. To have, you know, to be splitting or keeping those together, I don't think made sense. I mean, we can do anything we want. I mean, to just have that particular, have a committee, have that committee be the only. Other committee, I, well, I guess it's gonna be no different than like parks, arts and rec or.
One thing I didn't, that I don't. You know, so I agree with it, and that was the makeup of the committee, uh, which is fine. Three council people is great. I don't have an issue or. Any problems with that. Uh, I don't think having served for a one-year term is, is advisable. Um, most of the council people, uh, unless they've been around since Methuselah, like some of us. Don't have a, don't have a, a, it takes you a year to know what you're supposed to be doing.
I think it's just, it needs to be a rotating.
And I, and when we had one before, it was three people that rotated supposedly. Now. Sometimes, uh, they should have rotated maybe more than it did, cause there were several folks that served for multiple, multiple years. And that, like any other board, it, it works better if you get a little fresh blood once in a while.
Agreed.
The point being right is that with just three people. In this committee. And then the full council historically has ninety five percent agreed with the recommendation of those three people. Uh, are you getting input that is?
Well, the. We had, we had an answer to that question many, many times. Um, I think all the council people got the agenda for those committees. And m- many times people were.
Showed up anyway.
They would show up. And I, the caveat was always printed, there may be. A, a quorum of council people there, but, you know, the.
And they're not voting and they.
And the decisions are always. Presented to the full council anyway.
And I think this could also be a c- committee that would report to the committee of the whole.
Sure.
We bypass that.
Yeah.
To be something that would come about again. It would be like any other department head. Reporting this one would have to have a reported, um, committee at the whole. Every meeting. Every time.
So we've.
That would be good.
We've really merged six, seven and eight in this whole discussion, right? Discussion, uh, mediation, and then now we're talking about committees.
But the mediation proposal, I would, I would propose to. Table that for the, for the immediate time being, uh, since.
Well, in some cases, you know, going to. Well, in some cases, you know, you, you don't know what you'd need to mediate.
Ain't right.
I would say that's correct.
As far as the, the discussion, I, I think those are things that are overdue on our part anyway.
Yeah. And the only reason I wanted this on there is yes, I know that we were gonna be talking about a personnel committee, but.
Yeah.
Is there anything more that we need to do? And that's, that's to not necessarily come up with an answer. But, you know, are there other things that we need to do? Yes, um. We restored. Ms. Escrow back to her position, but did anything get fixed? Did we, you know, is, if there was something going on between the police department and um, the administrative offices? Has that been addressed?
I say that has not been fixed.
So I, you know, I.
And I'm just presuming.
I've been saying anything one way or the other, but if those lines of communication are broken, if we don't have a good. Uh, working relationship between different groups, personnel committee is, is still after the fact. So I'm just putting it out there. Think about when we need to go deeper or think about it. So do we need to make a. Um, request for like an. An investigation to decide if we do need to do some mediation.
I think that's probably a good deal going forward. For right now, I would just personally suggest that we just. Take a couple of weeks and let the waters calm a little bit.
I don't necessarily agree with that. It's something that needs to be addressed now.
I don't know if the waters are gonna calm, Rick. Just don't. I'm still getting calls and stuff today.
Well, I'm, I'm afraid that, you know. What we've done, and this is, I'm used to this because I was in I T. But I think that what we've managed to do now that chief has left and he's not happy. You can't make all the people happy, but you can piss them all off. And I think we're getting pretty darn close.
And there's a lot of distrust, distrust.
Agree with that.
And I'd love for some way to be proactive to take a shot at. You know, what's going on, what's wrong, and then try to fix something that rather than, I think personnel would be a good tool to have in place. To avoid this in the future. To provide um, tools for people who. Um, could use some backing or somebody to talk to or somewhere to bring grievances that. You know, don't fit other places.
Right.
But I'm not sure that that's the only thing we need to do right now.
I agree. I think it might make sense for us to bring in someone from the outside to look at this, just because. Um, I, I don't think that there's a lot of trust in us right now, and it might be helpful to have someone that is totally. Not emotionally connected to anything. Take a look at it. Uh, I don't know where that person would come from or that group of people would come from. Um, but it's worth investigating.
Would we have? Um, the proposal, would you like me to have to talk to her about something to see if there's, she offers a lot of services? Who is this? Um, what's uh? Well, I, I see the name on the piece of paper, but who is it and how'd you get that name and why is this person done contacted? I contacted this person because they touch on all the things that we could look at. Only thing that I, that's the only reason I'm trying to. It was kind of just. I don't know any. No, I understand.
Um, just a really. Dumb question, um, does the legal of municipalities offer any? Service or guidance in this kind of an area?
They have a lot of um, vendors. And it would be just similar to what I did.
Okay. That's fair.
I mean, not knowing the people.
Mm-hmm.
And there really is no buddy around here in this area that does this.
I think we, I think we need to take a look at some, some, someone we can decide. But we, I think we wanna see what we can get.
So I can. Talk to her, I can talk to others. I don't know. I mean, this, she has a lot of services. That's why I keyed in on her and she's close.
Good.
And she works a lot of um, this area, Northwest Wisconsin. She, she's always up and back and forth and. Doing several. She's up in DeKalb Superior. And that's, oh, that's interesting. So I talked to her for a while before I ever sent over.
Oh, what direction do we wanna give Patty? So we're clear.
Acknowledging the situation we're in right now. I think we need to take a strong look at this.
Find somebody who can do some investigation. Um. And it can be more than one. Bender. But I think it needs to be outside and it needs to be. Encumbered by us.
What do you think of this?
I think it sounded great. I just didn't know who it was and where it came from and how you got that name and are there any references and? And the thing that I liked about this, what was put together is obviously time is of the essence. I don't. I don't wanna wait. I, I wanna do what, I mean, obviously, we've been put in a. Very difficult position, we as the council.
Right.
Um, because we're obviously the ones that are taking the blame for all of this and that's very misguided. Um, but I think that we can't wait.
Hmm.
Would, would it be acceptable, anything, to wait until we talk with? These people regarding the personnel committee?
I think that they can be two separate things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think so too.
I think that we need to, we need to talk about the, doing personnel committee. For our future.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And I think that we need to have um. Something to deal with the situation that, that we have.
I think that I heard the direction is to find somebody that can help navigate. Our next steps.
Yes.
Yes.
That's for the timeline.
I have a theme for you. Say that again.
Timeline. We have committed the whole. I will get something to you by then. Yes.
Two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do something right away.
I think we need to be doing something.
Alright, so number, number nine, ordinance zero three, twenty twenty three, well. Uh, it sounded like we were, this was the one about the personnel committee. So it sounded to me like we wanted to table that.
Yeah, I think let's table that.
Is there a motion to that?
Make a motion to table, uh, the ordinance zero three, twenty twenty three, um, table that until our next committee of the whole, or do we? Do we want to even push it out farther than that? Or just, well, I will make a motion to table it till the committee of the whole meeting.
You know, second that.
Table it again.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Okay.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to number ten, closed session, Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, one B. Dash mayor concerning dismissal, demotion, licensing or discipline of any public employee or persons licensed by a board of commission. Or the investigation of charges against such person or considering the grant. Or denial of tenure for a universal, university faculty member. Uh, in the taking the formal action of any such matter, provided that the faculty member or other public employee or person's license is given actual notice. Of a evidentiary hearing which may be held prior to the final action being taken. And of any meeting at which final action may be taken. The notice shall contain a statement that the person has the right to demand that the evidentiary hearing. Or meeting be held in open session. This paragraph and uh, paragraph F do not apply to any such evidentiary hearing or meeting. Where the employee or person's license requests an open session be held. Also, Wisconsin Statute nineteen eight five, one C, police chief concerning employment promotion. Compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee or which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So is there a move to go into closed session? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Marks.
Yes.
Van Blerco?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Elkin?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Billy, you.
Uh, oh, we're back in open?
Yes.
We gotta read open. Okay, does, who's summarizing what we talked about? Wasn't there something we were gonna do?
Um, well, I would guess we. Maybe we didn't make a motion, but I will make a motion that we would go. That we begin the process of uh, hiring a new police chief.
Second thing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Hi.
I.
Those, we're adjourned.